Start with the pledge, please.
Yep, we will, but first we're going to call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission, Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020. It is now 5:01, and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Velto, can you lead us, please?
Sure. Do we have a flag or just begin?
I don't see our, we have one?
Perfect.
There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic.
To the republic.
For which we stand. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice.
Thank you. All right, Michelle, can we have roll call, please?
Just one moment. Wait it here, okay. John Marshall.
Here.
Kathleen Taylor is absent, Peter Gower.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Arthur Munoz.
Here.
Paul Levis.
Here.
Alex Velto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This is the time now for public comment. I'm not exactly certain where we are in the process of public commenting specifically. I guess, do we ask if we have any additional public comment than what we've already received?
No, I did not receive additional public comment for this item.
Okay. We will close public comment, and let's go to item 4.1, Approval of the Minutes. This is for the regular meeting on August 5th, 2020. And there aren't any questions or comments ready for motion?
Commissioner Gower moved to approve.
Do you want a second?
Commissioner Johnson, I'll second.
Thank you very much. Do we have any abstentions? Commissioner Velto. So we have Commissioner Velto and Commissioner Levis abstaining?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So a call for the motion. Do we need a roll call, Michelle?
I'm sorry, yes, I'll do the roll call, but who else abstained? Levis, is that correct?
And Velto.
Levis, yes.
Okay, John Marshall.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
And the record shows that Paul Levis and Alex Velto have abstained.
Okay, that motion carries, and now we're on to item 5, Zoning Code Renovation. And Angela, it's going to you.
One moment, we are going to bring Arlo into the meeting.
Okay.
Hi, Arlo.
Good afternoon, Arlo.
Good seeing all of you. For the record, Arlo Stockham, Community Development Director, and I'm the Acting Assistant City Manager as well. Here to present really an informational presentation today on the adoption draft of the zoning code update. Certainly, the team has been hard at work on this document in conjunction with all the COVID stuff, but we really felt it was important to move the process forward and not just fall into an indefinite delay due to the pandemic we're all experiencing. So if I could, I'm going to share my screen here, bear with me a moment. I have what's really a, not super detailed, but fairly extensive overview presentation of the adoption draft of code and some changes that have been made since the prior draft based on comments received, as well as the process moving forward. The real deliberations and recommendations from the commission we're looking for at subsequent meetings. I'll speak to that in a little bit, but certainly we're available for questions, but I don't think, given the time, we're going to have, we're going to be able to get into a whole lot of detail in terms of recommendations and changes at this meeting. So our presentation outline is really some background, a little bit on the process we have planned moving forward, how we're planning to address final revisions to the document, zoning map conversions, and then overview chapter by chapter of the document itself. I'm anticipating roughly 40 minutes for this overview. Let me just minimize screen here. I am assuming you are all seeing my slides, please tell me if you're not. And I hit all of you, so I can see my slides as well. So why do the update? I think this commission knows very well, but for those watching, this has been a city council priority on several topics for a while now. Priorities addressed include affordable housing, implementing the code update, and streamlining the planning and building process. This is also a key step in implementing the new master plan with a focus on growth management, affordable housing, sustainable design, and effective governance. Again, it's a master plan priority initiative, here's the list. This group is very aware of the master plan goals and policies. Certainly, the code update doesn't implement the master plan in its entirety. It's one piece of that implementation, but it is a pretty important piece. And it also is the key implementation for the structure plan and the design principles of the new master plan. Procedurally, we've been at this for, well, since before I started, really two years now, and we're at the final step of the process. We are planning a pretty extensive series of meetings and review and feedback opportunities, culminating with adoption hearings at the Planning Commission in November of this year and the City Council in December of this year. We've structured this process really as a series of steps. Where we are right now are informational presentations. We have this presentation, we already did one with the Technical Working Group. We have three public presentations via Zoom planned in the coming week, and then we will be having feedback meetings, first with the Planning Commission, and everything you will be reviewing has already been vetted through the Technical Working Group, and then through the City Council where they will have benefits of your recommendations, and then all that will come back for adoption hearings in November and December. Schedule of meetings generally looks like this. The bolded meeting dates, which include your next two meetings, are the ones where we're requesting recommendations and action. So we're planning to split the Planning Commission discussion and feedback into two parts, dealing with chapters 1 through 4 initially, and then the remaining chapters. As of yesterday, the Technical Working Group made it through chapters 1 through 4. So there's just one or two follow-up items from those discussions, but we have those recommendations that will be coming to you. In terms of tools to address the changes and the final approval, first, we have a summary document that's posted at reno.gov/zoning along with the updated code. It really provides a pretty detailed summary of the substantive amendments to code. It's structured much like a similar document we prepared during the last round of review. It's ordered sequentially as the code is ordered, with chapter summary, the significant amendment topics, and then a more detailed list of amendments. As we go through this final process, we are not scoped out to produce a new update of the final draft. We plan to bring this document forward for adoption. What we have is a table of revisions. Basically, as we go through this review process, some of them are just kind of final typos and cleanup items. We really are getting down to the details with our technical group meetings. And then there's going to be a series of more substantive items that will warrant further discussion. We also have the table that we've been developing throughout this process for code amendment topics that are not being addressed through this process that would be prioritized for work through separate processes. And then the map amendments, we have a process on the next slide to deal with map amendments and requests we may receive. And then, very importantly, we want to make sure that this is not a static document. While staff is very confident this is a significant improvement over what we have now, we know it's not going to be perfect. We intend to monitor how it's working post-adoption and have a fairly formal schedule of review and amendments every six months following adoption to see what's working, what maybe needs adjustment, and just to keep the document current and appropriate to the policy direction. In terms of zoning map amendments, you should have received by now, or you will be receiving any day, our second notification for this code update process. If you own property that is either proposed as a zoning map amendment or within the notice radius of a zoning map amendment property, you'll receive a map supplement with that notification. The zoning amendments are really limited to a handful of specific zones. The mixed-use zones are being significantly consolidated in this draft, so those all got map amendment notices. Similarly, the commercial zones are being consolidated into general commercial, and general office and professional office are being consolidated. So those are the map amendments. Some other districts are renamed, some of the single-family districts, and also IB industrial business being renamed to mixed employment, but the standards are unchanged, and those aren't map amendments, they're renaming, in effect. And then the overlay districts. Most of those are, they're a little funky, truthfully, and in the new code, they're addressed with standards, development standards addressing comparable issues. The exception to that is the gaming overlay, which suited itself pretty well to be an overlay zone. So we fully anticipate that we will receive requests for different zoning. I might have skipped right over, we also have a zoning district conversion table in Chapter 2 of the code that outlines how the existing districts are converting to the new districts in the draft. So in general, the zoning converts from an existing district to the most comparable new district in accordance with that table. We noticed the zones I listed before. Really, the only areas where the district boundaries are changing is the downtown area to reconcile the district boundaries to the new master plan land use boundaries. So when we get requests for revision, our proposal is to, upon adoption, do the zoning conversion, which essentially won't be doing zoning map amendments, and to have follow-up meetings to consider a few topics. The first one is a series of master plan and zoning map inconsistencies that we have. Those were set up when master plan land use was changed in some specific areas. Because the master plan changes, we're not, property owners were not directly noticed of those changes. This is really their opportunity to be noticed and to weigh in on what their preferred zoning is. We've heard from a number of people who may not agree with the new master planned land use and may recommend something different. We know others support the new ones, but we want to do a deliberate process to review those map areas and not have it, you know, jumbled together with all the other issues we're dealing with. We also expect to get property owner requests of people just saying, "I want a different zone, this isn't appropriate here." And again, we'll review all those at focused meetings to compete, complete in the first quarter of 2021. We also have a code standard, so in the interim, before that reconciliation occurs, fees would be waived for zoning map amendments to come into conformance with the master plan land use. And then, following adoption, is really where we get into the neighborhood scale, land use analysis, rezoning considerations, kind of neighborhood outreach process that we've discussed throughout this code update process. So that's kind of the game plan on mapping. On the code itself, much of it will look familiar to you. We have the same information to help with code review. Due to the comprehensive nature of the amendments and significant reorganizing, the redlined version of this document is not at all helpful. So we've instead used these commentary boxes at the top of each significant section. We have footnotes on each item where there is a substantive amendment to the existing code, and we have the 40-plus-page document, Summary of Code Amendments, to help identify what's changing from the existing code to the new code. So those are really key tools. I encourage you to review the summary of code amendments kind of together with the full code. That's how we're kind of managing the volume of what's being reviewed. Code organization is unchanged from the prior draft. A much cleaner organization than our current code and much more logical. We'll be going through those code sections sequentially in this presentation, really in all the documents that we have out for review right now. I'm sure many of you recall the key issues that have seen significant discussion throughout this process. Those key issues are still key issues. I'll touch on each of these as we go through chapter by chapter, but familiar topics, affordable housing, hillside development, parking landscaping. Really want to emphasize the new site and building design standards in Chapter 1804 and the expanded residential adjacency standards. These sections are pretty significant in hopefully driving quality design through an efficient development review process. The historic preservation sections, and then pretty significant changes to the processes in accordance with direction we got during review of the prior draft. Just diving right into it, I really do apologize, this is so impersonal over the internet, but I'm doing my best to talk into a screen. I hope this isn't too boring. Zoning can be a boring, a boring topic, but a very important topic at the same time. Chapter 1 is pretty straightforward, it's the general provisions. Really only a couple amendments built into this chapter. One is some relaxation of the limitations for non-conforming buildings and uses, making it a little easier to reuse property that may have been developed under a prior development code and doesn't meet all the current standards. We have a bunch of existing limitations that are often an impediment to redevelopment and adaptive reuse, including allowances to replace buildings that are destroyed by a disaster. Right now, if your home builds down, burns down, or your commercial building burns down, you don't necessarily have the right to rebuild it as it was, and we are proposing to allow that, really due to the extent of existing development in the community that doesn't conform to current standards and the desire to reuse more of our existing built environment as part of the growth management strategy. We also have updates in the transition, the section on transitions from prior regulations. Part of the extended phase-in process being recommended was driven by COVID. We previously had a six-month transition process where an applicant could basically pick which code to use, old code or new code. They couldn't pick or choose between the codes, and we're proposing to extend that to 12 months. And also, the fee waiver that I mentioned previously is contained in this section. The zone districts, the biggest changes here are organizational and format. The districts are largely unchanged. We have our nice new one-page format that you saw in the prior draft. We have the significant consolidation of mixed-use districts, which are very unwieldy now and kind of internally inconsistent from one block to the next. Those are being consolidated, 57 different overlay districts consolidating into 32. Really helps the understandability and usability of the code. And significant new districts, I think you're familiar with these, mixed-use urban, mixed-use suburban, and general commercial are pretty, going to be pretty widespread under this new code. And then the downtown district refinements. More limited palette of allowed uses in the university district and reduced intensities in the pounding district. We have made some revisions to the pounding district changes. Modest changes in the residential district, very, really pretty limited. All the basic standards in the residential districts are staying unchanged. The building height, the lot size limits, almost all of the setback standards are largely retained. So the residential districts are not really a focus of amendment beyond the new design standards that will apply. The changes that are proposed in this chapter include standardizing the requirements for accessory structures. Currently, it's very complex and confusing, and the new standards have some additional provisions for compatibility with the neighbors. So some limitations on the height of accessory structures, near property lines, and things of that nature. Other changes are setbacks from alleys. Most of our areas with alleys were developed under a prior code where setbacks were not required. However, subsequent to that, a 20-foot setback was required, so many, many structures are non-conforming. Through the feedback we got, that seems counter to infill development and community desires, so we're going back to zero-foot setbacks from alleys. In addition, a change since the last draft involves, our current code has bigger setbacks required from arterial roadways. This, I think, was a relic from a prior era where we were designing more around the automobile, but with infill development, we really, it's really inappropriate to have 30-foot setbacks from a lot of our arterials. So standard setbacks would apply adjacent to arterials, just like any other street. We've expanded the building coverage standards to have standards for all districts. Right now, it's only for a few single-family districts. Generally maintaining the 40% building coverage limitation, slightly less in the very large lot districts. And those are for the single-family districts, I should clarify. You saw in the prior review, multifamily building separation. We currently have two different standards depending on the number of units. The proposal is to stick with the smaller separation standard of 10 feet, regardless of the number of units. And then we have new setback standards to garage doors. So garage doors have to be 20 feet from the sidewalk or property line. Right now, we have driveway requirements, but you can actually build a, we have parking requirements, but you could build a shorter driveway that isn't considered a parking space, and that's created some problems in areas. Also, please note, the site and building design standards really supplement these. These are just the bulk and intensity standards. The more detailed design requirements are outlined in Chapter 1804. And we have placeholders for the three conservation districts to be filled in later with neighborhood consultation following adoption of the code. Changes in this chapter from the prior draft. You know, I think you reviewed all of these during your last review meeting for that draft. We added the zoning district conversion table, which is going to govern the zoning map conversions. The setback from arterials I mentioned is a change. Pounding district is worth mentioning a bit. A lot of feedback we got was that we went too far on the downzoning, and the new standards were at a lower intensity than the existing development pattern. We looked more closely at the area and, in general, agree, in particular in some transition areas. So throughout the pounding district, the model intensity is bumped up slightly to be more comparable to an MF21. And in addition, the transition area, really east of Ralston, extending from Ralston to Arlington, has a different character of development, higher building heights. So the new standards reflect the existing development pattern in that area. Other, some more minor refinements to the parks district and public facility district. More significant, we have the reinstated specific plan district section in here in accordance with direction we received. That does have a bunch of new language, really providing limitations on what the SPDs should change and really calling for it to them to be based on a base zoning district with modifications really for an identified community need. So there's new limitations for SPDs, there's new organizational language and additional findings prior to approval of SPDs, but this draft would retain that zone district. It's really a good tool to resolve kind of disagreements and controversies involving development. The PUD district is also pretty significantly expanded. There's a number of new requirements on PUDs. This was a pretty big discussion item at council and a desire to kind of better organize our PUDs, and I'll speak to more of the details in Chapter 1808. But both of those SPD and PUD sections are fairly significant and worth a close review. And then the, some adjustments to the overlay standards, as discussed previously. 1803 also doesn't have dramatic modifications from the last draft. The same kind of draft user tools in the Table of Allowed Land Uses with the color shading indicating if it's more or less permissive than the existing code. This, most people in the community won't care about this, but for people who use the code day in and day out, this single Table of Allowed Land Uses is just a massive improvement on, from the existing code. Some targeted changes since the prior draft. Restaurant allowances in the higher-density multifamily districts. I'm sorry, these are not changes from the prior draft, these are overall changes. The additional allowances for home occupations, allowing open-mot parking businesses, which are currently not allowed except temporarily. That's part of a broader parking strategy that we'll be touching on in a little bit. Our new use categories. One thing that has changed since the last one is entertainment uses. This has been a longstanding challenge, kind of how do you deal with nightclubs, wedding venues? And there's an updated framework where basically there are uses for entertainment. Live entertainment is pretty much the full suite of entertainment uses. It generally requires a public hearing approval, but daytime entertainment is really a much softer, you know, daytime, non-amplified separation from residential, and that's proposed to be allowed through simpler processes, generally by right if it meets the new standards. We think this will address a lot of confusion and really, you know, difficult standards that we currently have in place for entertainment. Mobile home park standards. Increased threshold for multifamily discretionary reviews. Still not as high as the standards in Sparks, but a little more could be done by right. Our location standards for drive-throughs and gas stations and things like that. Outdoor storage standards, which currently are all over the place, are consolidated in this code. Vegetation management, this is really defensible space. Wildfire safety, potentially to include prescribed grazing. We don't really, our code doesn't really address that now, but it's very important in this era of wildfire and various cleanups. Just some targeted changes from the prior draft. The relax, some of the supplemental standards that were drafted for duplex, triplex, and fourplexes were excessive and have been relaxed. The change to the review threshold for multifamily is new. We do have some added language. We do have some added language, clarifying that improvements to mobile home parks that are not currently conforming to code are allowed, basically with a closer conformance standard. This will help some of the mobile home parks, you know, make incremental improvements moving towards the current code without kind of cost-prohibitive requirements that have impeded those improvements to date. The entertainment uses I mentioned, and then a suite of refinements, more technical details. Again, all outlined in more detail in the code amendments summary document. Eighteen oh four is a biggie. The technical working group, just as a heads up, had very minor adjustments for the, to the first three chapters. And we had a very good discussion yesterday of Chapter eighteen oh four. Made it through the whole thing, it's a pretty substantive chapter. A few key discussion points, but overall, what we're hearing is more details than major wholesale changes being proposed at this point. The organization, again, is for, from the ground up, kind of more logical as you would design a project. There are two new articles in here. Article two, a new sustainability ordinance, I'll speak to in a little bit of detail. Then the others are unchanged. And also in this draft, it's reorganized to have a separate article for housing. Some of our housing incentives, affordable housing incentives, didn't really fit cleanly anywhere. And a lot of codes have housing sections, so we, we went that direction with the idea that possible future amendments addressing housing could also be organized in this manner. I go through each of these articles, kind of in order, because they're pretty substantive, each on their own. The first article is our natural resource standards, largely retained. Amendments to flood hazard ordinances, drainage way ordinances. Those are proposed to be addressed through separate processes. Really pretty complex technical stuff to wrap together with a broad code update. We do have, for flood hazards, a codification of the additional retention standards. We've been requiring through conditions of approval. And also new language on source water protection. This was initially proposed as an overlay zone, but looking at the area, it's proposed to be generally applicable now. Generally a notification process, not new regulations. Couple updates from the prior draft. There was a catch by, I think it was the technical working group, a little weird glitch in our shadowing ordinance where you cannot shadow, a building over thirty-five feet cannot shadow another residential building. But in the MF twenty-one and thirty districts, our height limit's forty-five feet. So we were de facto reducing the height allowances on most of those parcels to thirty-five. Very targeted change to move it up to forty-five feet to reflect the height standard in those districts. And then just a suite of modernization cleanup language in the flood ordinance. It has old outdated references, and really those are the changes from prior draft. Sustainability is a hot discussion topic. I know it's, it's an important topic for this commission. Received a lot of discussion yesterday, and this is one, we have a follow-up meeting scheduled. Hopefully that will get done before your next meeting, so you can have benefit of recommendations. You may remember there were some recommendations out of this commission to have some supplemental building design requirements, solar-enabled and electric vehicle charging standards. Council was concerned about the impact of those broad standards on housing affordability. And through discussions, we're recommending kind of a little more balanced approach where we address sustainability, but through a more flexible approach, so projects could choose from a menu of sustainable design options. They would have essentially a point requirement and be able to pick from a list of features to reach a total point total. This is largely copied from the Henderson ordinance, which was suggested to us by our consultants as one of the more effective sustainability ordinances. It's been in place for close to a decade and been through at least one round of revisions. We did make some adjustments proposed to address urban infill and affordable housing, which aren't really addressed in Henderson. And the discussion yesterday, certainly some stakeholders would like to add some requirements, probably in the form of a higher point total in outlying areas and some detailed changes. There were also some technical adjustments recommended to to really reflect the differences in climate. Henderson's more of a summer air conditioning climate, we also have winter up here. So some, some adjustments, more technical in nature to reflect that. So we're scheduling a follow-up meeting to include the Air Quality Division of District Health, some working group members, kind of a small group, to try to hash through in a little more detail some of those suggested refinements to this ordinance. I think it's fair to say that the stakeholders so far have been generally supportive of this approach. We had some discussion about whether COVID changed, changed the dynamic on a sustainability ordinance, and I think the consensus was it really didn't. But you can certainly anticipate some controversy over this topic and recommendations coming to you to both be stricter or less strict from different stakeholders. We're trying to strike a decent balance to move towards more sustainable building design. I'll speak to grading and hillside development together, because they kind of work together. In general, it's a somewhat, somewhat significant reduction in public hearing requirements for hillside developments in grading, rolled out in conjunction with significantly expanded design requirements, addressing all the types of things that are currently addressed through development review processes and conditions of approval. We have location standards for the cut-and-fill slopes. We have weed abatement standards, we have hours of grading near residential, a consistent approach for that. The real biggies here are the slope limitations and treatment standards and expanded hillside architecture standards. A series of refinements since the last draft, more technical in nature. The biggie, though, is an allowance for consideration of alternative designs with the public hearing process and supplemental findings. The nature of discussions, I think it's fair to say, the development community was raised concerns that these standards were too prescriptive, and while generally appropriate, may not work on every site. Others were concerned that, you know, softening the standards would make them less meaningful. So the landing spot was to keep the standards generally pretty strict, but allow a process to consider alternatives, which would go before the planning commission prior to any approval. Articles five and six really deal with the street and sidewalk standards. You know, a lot of, a lot of just cleanup work to make sure everything's consistent with the Public Works Design Manual. There is, there continues to be the proposal to expand residential sidewalk requirements to a five-foot width. Currently, we're at four feet. And that's also being done in conjunction with design standard manuals for narrower streets. So the bottom-line package is wider sidewalks, narrower streets. And then a clarified language for sidewalk waivers, which is really subjective right now. Article six, we did some significant modifications. These were new standards proposed for street connectivity and also pedestrian and bike connectivity. The general input was we were too prescriptive on the street connectivity standards and a little more flexibility for design while still maintaining requirements for connected subdivisions and, you know, kind of a minimization of a sea of cul-de-sacs that aren't connected to the neighboring developments. So those have been made more flexible, and the pet and bike standards are not dramatically changed. Other updates from the prior draft, there was a lot of confusion about traffic analysis requirements. That's been clarified, generally consistent with current practice. And really, that's about it. The changes to the pedestrian standards were, were very minor and nuanced. Parking might be the biggest discussion topic we've had. I suspect many of you recall, this is generally replacing our framework now, which I would characterize as excessive parking requirements in the standard code, coupled with a whole suite of different exception opportunities. Certain overlay districts reduce parking in different ways. We also have allowances for parking studies to be submitted for each project consistent with ITE and APA recommendations. And those have become pretty routine, but it's a very clunky way to handle things. We're generally proposing to adopt reduced parking standards, generally consistent with modern industry recommendations, and also structured in a way that has reduced parking in more urban areas and increased parking in outlying areas. So downtown, no minimum parking, i.e. discretionary parking, would be expanded to all uses. Right now, that's currently in place for a lot of uses, but not all uses. And really moving to more of an urban standard where we have probably paid parking facilities in the future and, excuse me, more market-driven determinations of parking needed for each individual project. Then there's Level One, which is a reduced parking standard. This is in areas well-served by transit and pretty walkable, midtown commercial and our mixed-use urban district, and Level Two standards elsewhere. The transitional areas have been modified since the last draft, I'll speak to it the next slide. And then a suite of other adjustments that largely go along with the broader changes to parking requirements. More off-site and shared parking, including at a greater distance, is allowed. Removing maximum parking, recalibrating on-street and accessible parking to reflect the new base parking standards. Our affordable housing incentives, opening up eligibility a little more. We have new standards for trip reduction that were worked out in coordination with RTC staff and expanded bicycle parking requirements. Again, all really focusing on sustainable design balance with housing affordability. Big driving principles here. The updates, a lot of technical refinements to the parking rates. We had inadvertently increased parking requirements for the South Virginia corridor. So that's been remedied to retain our existing, which is no required parking for retail and restaurants. The second bullet here is probably the more significant change. There are additional expanded transition areas. So what that does is allow reduction in parking, kind of a blended rate for properties that are not in the downtown, but within a quarter mile of the downtown area or within a quarter mile of rapid transit routes, or Street and Virginia Street at this point. So that really addresses the areas right near downtown, but not quite within them. We did some adjustments to the Level Two rates, largely for retail restaurant uses. Spark standards required much less parking than we were proposing, so we didn't move all the way to where Sparks is, but a lot closer. We find trip reduction program and other miscellaneous refinements since the last draft. Landscaping, we started with pretty modest targeted changes. We had the benefit of a group of landscape architects, really put in some good time and thought, and came forward with a suite of recommendations that were largely embraced by reviewers, including the technical working group. In general, it reduces the size of trees and shrubs at planting, but significantly expands requirements for tree well and soil preparation. This is all recommended by the professionals in the field as a way to improve tree growth and expand our urban tree canopy over time. Sometimes when you plant overly large trees, it's counterproductive, they grow so slowly. The small trees will pass them in a few years and just be much healthier. We also have enhanced standards for parking lot landscaping, addressing a lot of deficiencies in our current code and various other technical refinements. Also, semi-related is a reduction in front yard fence allowances from four and a half feet to four feet, which is more standard in communities around the country. These Articles nine, ten, eleven are biggies. You will use one of these articles, depending on what your zone district is. Article nine for the residential district, ten for the mixed-use districts, and eleven for the non-residential districts. They generally address the same topics, but in different ways that are appropriate to the different areas of Reno. So I'll speak to those a little bit. And these are supplemented with our expanded residential adjacency standards, which also apply on top of these. Residential standards, some existing language, some new language. There's generally applicable standards and then supplemental standards for certain districts. Some of the updates, the biggie is to apply these standards based on your zoning district, not your use type. So for example, a residential project in a mixed-use zoning district under this adoption draft would be subject to the mixed-use design standards. We felt that would achieve better consistency block to block and better reflect the intent of the master plan design principles. A series of pretty technical refinements, I don't think we should go through each of those today, really to most of the sections in here. I do want to focus in particular on the standards for setbacks and stepbacks. You may recall, these are new requirements to enhance compatibility within neighborhoods. So kind of the residential scale urban infill would have to set back from the property line a little more as the buildings get taller. These have been not changed, but reorganized to be located in this article here. We also refined the standards for large vehicle parking, boats, RVs, and the like, and alternative setback development, currently known as small lot development. And then one biggie that I can't recall if this came out of the planning commission meeting or the subsequent council meeting, involves multi-family unit sizes and giving increased density for projects with small residential units. This addresses the issue where our current code basically regulates a four-thousand-square-foot condo exactly the same as a five-hundred-square-foot studio. So density becomes the limiting factor for more affordable housing products, and that's counter to our goals of having more affordable housing and being less exclusionary. So in effect, there's a table, whereas if you're developing a project with very small residential unit sizes, you can add additional units above the base density. Still having to comply with the basic height setback standards that are otherwise applicable. Probably the biggest change in this section. Article ten deals with the mixed-use districts. Kind of the same refinements, a lot of detailed refinements. Probably the, the building standards are the most significant of the changes. We also did a very deep dive into the downtown district standards and noted some errors that did not properly reflect current code, especially along the Riverwalk. So we cleaned all that up, so the downtown district standards are substantively unchanged from the existing standards for the River corridor and California Avenue district. Some minor refinements to the professional office parking standard and various other technical clarifications. Eleven is the non-residential districts, primarily industrial. The, the biggie's here is there are new supplemental standards trying to address the challenges with with industrial residential interface, which we have a lot, primarily in the North Valleys. It's not ideal, but it exists. These are new standards for the loading dock orientation and screening requirements, additional landscape requirements that increase as project sizes increase, and then a requirement for site-specific mitigation plans for larger projects to address compatibility with nearby residents. And then the airport standards, which are largely retained. Significant changes, again, the applicability based on districts. The biggies are the building standards, orientation standards for customer entrances and truck loading, really, you know, orienting the customer entrances towards the street and the truck-loading docks away from residences and away from streets to the extent feasible. Another biggie, a big topic, and I'm sure when it comes to the adoption hearing, we'll have testimony on both sides, are the building articulation standards for big boxes. A lot of folks, especially in the industry, feel our horizontal and vertical articulation, you know, isn't the best way to drive good design. On the flip side, it is good in preventing ugly square boxes from popping up on industrial sites. So the balance we're proposing here is to generally retain the articulation standards, but allow alternative designs to be proposed with a binding of equal or greater architectural interest. So this would allow alternatives that truly do provide nice alternative designs, but would continue to prohibit the ugly square box that you see in many areas that don't have these types of standards. With some refinements to the residential compatibility standards, as well as the airport standards, not dramatic in those. I'll go through pretty quick. I'm sure you're bored to death because this is a boring presentation, but hopefully the content is helpful. Lighting standards significantly expanded. We have very little in our lighting code now. We have a new model ordinance. A few refinements dealing with holiday-style lights. There were concerns that, you know, they were exempt and are kind of being used in some areas as debacked lighting. So long-term use of holiday-style lights are not exempt from other requirements. Still allowed, but subject to the maximum illumination and other standards. Also, new standards for light temperature. We went with, we looked at a number of different ordinances around the country. More and more are looking at temperature standards. This is kind of the color hue. The higher the temperature is more the blue hue that's very bright, and more yellow hue is a lower temp. We're recommending 4,000 Kelvin as the max. We've seen a little bit higher, we've seen a little bit lower. But that prevents the very, the very high-temperature, very bright lighting hues, but not excessive. We did see ordinances as low as 3,000, but 4,000-ish seemed to be about the standard. And also recommendations, changes to reduce the allowed light pole heights in our residential and mixed-use areas. 30 feet would still be allowed in non-residential, but shorter, 25-foot mixed-use, 18-foot for residential districts, so. Residential adjacency, next up. Expanded applicability to include property within 150 feet of residential zoning. A somewhat streamlined development review process, moving to site plan review, which is publicly noticed, appealable, but not planning commission hearing. And some exceptions for smaller projects located across an R T O or freeway, under 10 acres in size, being a key limitation there. And then significantly expanded standards dealing with all the impacts that come along with non-residential uses adjacent to residential. A suite of refinements from the prior draft, including that larger roadway exemption. We have refined standards for allowed work hours near residential, also for drive-through facilities, and just a suite of refinements to each various section based on the feedback we received. Housing is reorganized, but not significantly changed from the prior draft. Relocated to this section. This is where our affordable housing density incentives are located. What we did add is with the new multifamily density allowances for small units, we felt we needed to clarify, you know, is there a cumulative limit? Can they be added together if you have an affordable housing project be restricted with small unit sizes? So this applies a maximum density increase of 30% in total. Signs are largely unchanged. Two targeted changes to deal with recent case law. And also a new system for a map-based system dealing with billboards. It's exceedingly difficult right now to determine which locations are allowed billboards and which aren't. You have to research back to prior designations, and it's literally a research project to figure out where you can do a billboard. And that's, that's more difficult, and it's prone to mistakes and interpretation. We actually have some litigation going on, on an interpretation right now. So we're proposing a map-based system that, we did a lot of research as to what the current standards are. This map-based system maintains the substantive requirements. Where you can do billboards now, you still can. Where you can't, you still can't. It's fairly complex. We have some meetings scheduled with the interest groups related to signs to look through that in detail. But overall, it's a very difficult way that we had to. It's harder to maintain existing standards than it sounds, but it turned out to be fairly complex with the way the current code is structured. We did have to make one additional change to the gas station sign standards. We can't say that the additional sign is for gas station prices. So we removed that language. The gas stations could still have their extra little sign. They could still put prices on it, but the code doesn't require prices to be on that sign because that's counter to the Supreme Court ruling. Historic preservation saw some pretty significant refinements to the last draft. Fairly significant changes. We're scheduling a special meeting of the Historical Resources Commission to review this in detail prior to your review meeting, which will occur in one month. Not sure I need to read off this whole list. But overall, it addresses a lot of the challenges currently being confronted in the historic resource field. Kind of a simplified streamlined system for designations, some clarity in terms of historically significant features, some additional protection standards, both involving the review of project adjacent to historic resources, and expansion of the mitigation requirements for demolition permits. It does stop short of giving the city authority to deny a demo permit. That was discussed in some detail. And these changes are consistent with the fairly detailed language in the master plan calling for these types of changes. Demolition by neglect is another one, and future development of a more detailed incentive program. So we'll come back to you with the H R C recommendations for this chapter. The last biggie, and really the second big issue next to parking, involves our process changes. Probably the biggest change we made from the prior draft was based on this body's recommendation and the recommendation that came out of the Technical Working Group to better manage, to change, shift away from our special use permit process and have more targeted procedures dealing with different types of applications. So the new framework has two different procedures for land use approvals. These replace special use permits. Conditional use permits are effectively the same as our special use permits today. Minor C U Ps are for minor types of projects that would follow the same processes we use for site plan review, which is public notice, a staff decision with conditions of approval, appealable to the city council. Similarly, those two tiers of review, a planning commission review and enhanced administrative for site plan reviews. So for example, grading applications that exceed the thresholds, that's not a land use, that's a site plan design issue. That would be a major site plan review. The process will look just like a special use permit process, but the findings are more targeted to site plan considerations. So we don't have findings on window placement, for example, on a grading application. And then some pretty targeted exceptions I'll speak to on a later slide. The flexibility and relief provisions, major deviations in alternative compliance. Those were in the prior draft. We, we went to planning commission review for both of those. Findings are pretty extensively updated. Please read those and let us know if there are any concerns with those. The key thing here is the site plan review findings mirrored the conditional use permit findings. They address the same issues, but a subset of those issues. So for example, the conditional use findings deal with site design considerations, but also land use considerations. Whereas the site plan findings are focused really on site design, not on land use considerations. And there's a suite of supplemental findings for different types of applications built in as well. Significant changes for P U Ds, S P Ds, and development agreements I'll speak to, and just overall restructuring the organization and completeness for clarity. Organizationally, the first article is really just the foundational language. The second article is the summary table of review requirements. These were updated to reflect other changes. The third article's a biggie. We have a bunch of gaps in our code now on common review procedures that are applicable to all developments. You know, we have certain language for special use permits, but then there isn't language for variances. This makes it clear that we have consistent standards that apply to all types of applications, addressing kind of the whole suite of steps in the development review process. This is generally drafted, consistent with current practice, but more clear in the way it's presented. Everything's really been updated, again, to reflect the new procedures and a suite of minor adjustments. Probably one of the biggies here is the appeals. So appeals of enhanced administrative decisions would no longer go to the hearings examiner. It would be direct appeals to council. So planning commission decisions could get appealed direct to council. Similarly, administrative decisions on discretionary land use matters would be appealed direct to council. A lot of feedback that the hearing examiner stepped in the process does not add value. It just adds delay. And then a little increased flexibility on the scheduling of appeals. We've expanded language for annexation and master plan procedures. I don't think I need to speak to that in too much detail. I see I'm going over my 40-minute allocation. The ordinance amendment, this is what deals with text amendments, rezonings, S P D, P U D. Really, the biggest changes in this article deal with S P D and P U D zoning. A lot more detailed guidance, especially for P U Ds, but also S P Ds, expanded requirements, new findings, the minor amendment process and refinements to that, provisions for reconsideration and revocation, and new findings. Article Six deals with the different type of development permits. I went through these in some detail already. I won't repeat myself. It does warrant a good review of this article. We think it's an improved framework in general. I think this is maybe a bit much detail here. Again, the use permit and site design changes, refinements to findings, and some targeted process streamlining. Really, we had a lot of discussion of what are those discretionary review thresholds. There are some shifts from planning commission public hearings to enhanced administrative procedures. But really, the relaxation focuses on residential adjacency, on the grading and hillside development provisions, some minor changes for additions to existing development to be allowed by right, slightly increasing that. Any administrative process can be upgraded to a planning commission hearing at discretion of the applicant. And we do have a new exception for live entertainment in the downtown area and separated from residential districts to no longer require a special use permit for that. And we also, in this section, have expanded documentation requirements for demolition of buildings over 50 years in age. This kind of works together with historic resource language to deal with older buildings that are not listed on the historic register. Subdivision procedures largely unchanged. Flexibility and relief, this is where variances are. The new alternative major deviation and alternative equivalent compliance procedures. The main shift here is some additional limitations on what major deviations can apply to. Not allowed to apply to density, lot size, or building height in addition to the signs in the prior draft. We went away from the land use hearing examiner concept in the prior draft. So all of these applications exempting minor deviations require planning commission review. And the development agreement text you see in the draft will be updated to reflect the final ordinance that was reviewed by this body and approved by council. I think we're still coming on the second reading, but at our last meeting. Article Nine deals with the decision-making bodies and the review bodies. The removal of land use hearing examiner was a significant change. And the last chapter is our rules and definitions. Really just adjustments reflecting the other code changes. Probably the biggies to look at is how we've defined live entertainment and daytime entertainment. I appreciate you bearing with me with, for this long presentation. I see you all again. You're not quite asleep yet. I do hope this was a little bit helpful as you go through the document and review at our next meeting. I'm hoping it's all of you talking and giving feedback a lot more than us presenting. Oh, and I totally skipped our last slide because I wanted to see your faces. Anyone watching at home, please visit our webpage at Reno.gov/zoning. Feel free to contact us through any of our mechanisms with questions, suggestions, recommendations, whatever it may be. We're 90% of the way through this, this process, but not 100%. I'll shut up now. Thanks for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, Arlo. Let's, first, I wanted to say that Commissioner Johnson would like to have that full presentation given to her on a one-on-one basis. So please give her a call. And let's hear, before we get to questions, let's, I think quickly, we need to do disclosures and open for any subsequent public comment. This is a, I think we still have to do disclosures, right, Carl? Even though it's crazy legislative?
I don't think you need to do any disclosures. We're not making any land use decisions tonight, so.
Okay. We can skip that, then?
Yep.
Okay. Michelle, do we have any additional public comment that we need to provide?
No, I did not receive additional public comment for this item.
Okay, let's go to questions from Planning Commission. Anybody want to start us off?
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Johnson, I got a couple of questions.
Just please, go ahead.
Quickly, I won't get in, I put a couple of notes down, Arlo, but I just had a couple of maybe procedural questions before we get into it. You said we're going to. You said we're going to be doing this, I guess, the next, first four chapters we're going to be looking at in two weeks. How far in advance of that will we actually be receiving the draft to review? I mean, are we expecting it the Friday beforehand? Or can we get it a little bit sooner than that?
Everything you have to review exempting the technical working group recommendations has been distributed and posted online for a month now. It's really the code document itself, the summary of changes. We will be distributing the summary table of recommended adjustments, which is pretty targeted about a week ahead of your meeting. That's going to be a couple few pages. We had the discussion yesterday with the technical working group. The team's writing that up right now. So, we'll send that out a little earlier if you want. But really, if you haven't already, please download the draft document, go to the sections that you're interested in, or read it cover to cover, and use that code amendment summary. And we really just want your feedback on that material.
Okay, and then that nicely leads into my second question, which is, you know, in terms of what's anticipated moving forward, obviously, there's, you know, a number of us on the commission, and there's a number of different topics that are going to be up for discussion. And maybe this is more administrative for you to be thinking about how we want to go about that. I mean, if it's just each of us, you know, individually raising the questions that we have, or if there's some format to it, or if there's an expectation that questions we have should be submitted in advance. Just thinking about, you know, as you say, you were presenting without any feedback for close to an hour. And those of us on the commission, speaking for myself, are not known for our brevity. So, I think, I would be interested in maybe a little bit of understanding of how we want to approach this. So, I'm assuming it's not going to be the only thing on our agenda. So, again, that's less of a question and more of a statement, just, you know, in terms of how the process is going to work for these next ones. And again, as a trial run with us for what you're going to go through when you get to the next level of council.
Yes, that's a good statement question and something we've been thinking about as well. You know, we're hoping you're able to start your next two meetings at 5:00 as well and just dive right into it. Certainly, if you're not, we'll stay and just make it late. I think we're trying to juggle other agenda items, so it's not too big. Angela can speak to that a little more. Certainly, if you have any feedback you want to provide us kind of as individuals in advance or questions, please do so. I'm available, Angela. We have Jeff Borcard available, who's diving right into this to help as well. So, don't hesitate to contact us offline as well. In terms of more formal recommendations, we were planning to kind of go through it from starting on page one and just go chapter at a time. I think you'll find that we'll go through chapters one through three pretty quickly. And chapter four is a real big one. So, we were planning to break the discussion up into chunks. Probably, we'll probably need to break chapter four up into several chunks as well and kind of get feedback from the body, chapter by chapter. And then we're planning to expand upon the table of amendments. We've, we're vetting feedback we get from the community at large. We're trying to vet those recommendations through the technical working group, all using that same table. So, that same document will then come to you. And if this body has recommendations to change once on that table, or add things to the table, or otherwise recommend changes, we would expand that table to note the planning commission recommendations as well and to bring those forward to council. We don't need to be super rigid if there's a couple follow-up items. Say, for example, sustainability discussions are ongoing. You know, we could have a follow-up discussion of that at the subsequent meeting. But we are hoping to get through the first four chapters at your next meeting and the last four chapters after that.
Right. I admire your optimism, Arlo. Thank you. Commissioner Marshall, no more questions from me.
Thank you. Before I move on, Arlo, can you just clarify something? I think in your answer, I also had written it down as a question. So, will there be a draft of chapter 18 that has all the changes integrated in it? Or do we need to kind of look at what's posted? Look at the additional changes in the supplementary document to get a full read of what the actual, what will be asked to approve?
Really, the document that's posted, that's been up for a month or two, is what you're reviewing. We're not planning to do a new document. Frankly, we don't have budget or schedule to do new documents between each step of the review process. That table of amendments is pretty limited. It's going to be maybe a dozen specific changes for the first four chapters, with three-quarters of those being just typo cleanup type things. So, we really went through, I don't have the list in front of me, it was less than a half dozen significant discussion items that have emerged. So, we'll get that out as soon as it's finalized, but you will need to review that kind of in parallel with the code. But don't wait on it. The code outlines everything. It's really been refined through all the reviews we've done. And it's pretty close, so, final.
Thank you. I just wanted to make certain for the public to understand that it's, they're going to have to have two documents to see the final language that will be put before the planning commission. So, the code online, the chapter online at reno.gov/zonings, as well as the supplemental changes to that. So, I, okay, thank you. All right. Other commissioners, do you have other questions? Commissioner Veltro, were you getting ready about to say something, or no? All right. Any other questions? Arlo, thank you for addressing the cards. That certainly, they're received in the mail. I got one. And so, I think that generated a bunch of interest. But I was going to ask you to talk about that, but you did, so thank you for that. I also want to kind of echo Commissioner Johnson's comments about, you know, the task that's before us to try to digest all of it, even though we've kind of already seen the kind of base, you know, probably 90% of what's in there. But then bringing it forward, I really, and Angela, maybe you can comment on this, we really need to clear some time, not at the, you know, not at the 11 o'clock hour or the midnight hour, to allow us to dig into this and provide you all with our feedback. So, agenda management would be, I think, greatly appreciated.
If it's looking too unwieldy and you want to spend more time on the code, you know, we could arrange for a special meeting focused just on that. We were hoping if we started at 5:00 and do a couple hours, we could work through it. But if you really want to dive deeper in, we can do a separate meeting.
Well, I guess what I'm worried about is what Commissioner Johnson noted, that if, you know, it's going to take you a chunk of time to do a presentation, which I think is really good. I'm not trying to minimize that at all. But then, you know, I think there are going to be substantive issues. I mean, I want to hear Commissioner Johnson on what exactly alternative architectural interest is.
It's right here. It's right here on my notes.
So, I think, don't, please don't underestimate the amount of time that I think the commissioners would like to discuss. So, maybe, I don't know what you all think. So, maybe we can have some feedback on this. But, you know, is a special, do we want to do a special meeting? And, you know, maybe Angela, you can look at our agenda. I know we have some continuances of items. You know, items being pulled and requesting a continuance on this agenda. What are we looking like?
Yeah, this is Angela. We do have quite a few agenda items scheduled for the next couple meetings. So, it might be worthwhile to do a separate meeting. I'm just looking at the schedule. I think our next, the one on the 16th is our next one. And we have probably four, five, well, probably four to five items scheduled on that meeting date.
Commissioners, any feedback on your preference?
Commissioner Veltro, I'm strongly in favor of a separate meeting to cover this. I do think there'll be a lot of questions and feedback. And I just, it just makes sense for us to have enough time so we don't feel compressed.
Any other input?
Commissioner Johnson, I would agree with Commissioner Veltro. I mean, we've gone through these once before. And not that, you know, not that I'm necessarily in favor of us all adding additional meetings, but I do share a concern that this, you know, this deserves an awful lot of our time and effort and energy. And I would prefer it to be the focus without any kind of additional time constraints. So, but again, it depends on what's available for city staff and meeting times and noticing and everything else.
Okay, those of you who have not said anything will be stuck with the result. And I guess that's okay. So, I think we can close this item unless commissioners, you have any other last questions?
Commissioner, just to request that, I'm sure, Arlo, you have this dialed in already, but to, in advance of that meeting, just provide a, you know, a summary or some sort of information available to the commission, the output of the public meetings, and, you know, that series of meetings that you're going to have over the next month. Because I think that's a third piece of the puzzle that we need to consider here.
Maybe a suggestion we could do is distribute to you in the near future kind of the work in process and kind of note there's a couple topics, like sustainability with ongoing discussions. So, you could start having that. I don't know if that would confuse things or be helpful, but we'd happy to, you know, share with you kind of our work in process as we go through the process.
That'd be helpful for me. Thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you, Arlo.
Well, I really appreciate the time today. Thank you. And we'll find, we'll be contacting you about meeting availability, and we'll find a day that works.
Okay. Just as long as I don't have to be chair.
All right, John.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to, Angela, do we want to roll right into our full, our 6:00 agenda?
We can do that. Yep, we're good to go.
Okay, commissioners, do you need a break, or should we just keep on going? All right, I see, keep on going. All right, so we're going to, item 6.1 has been pulled. So, we're now on to item 6.2, LDC 20-00068, Truckee River Green Town Homes. We have been, there has been a request for a continuance. Commissioners, what I'd like to do with this item is hear the request for a continuance first before we do the full presentation. If we decide, if we decline that request, then we'll come back around for the presentation. Unless somebody has any severe objection, I propose to do it that way. And if that's the case, looks like general agreement. Angela, should we just turn it over to the applicant?
Yep. Do we, hold on one moment, guys. We are going to pull up the applicant. He's not on yet.
Just one moment.
So, this is where we give him the, every meeting, 10 minutes of trying to get?
We're going to bring in Mr. John Krompotic. It should be just one moment.
Angela, for me, sorry, maybe it's my old ears, but sometimes, yeah, you're not very loud.
John, can we hear you? Or can you hear us? Sorry. Can we hear you? Can you unmute? John, can you unmute your phone? We can't hear you. Your phone is muted. John, can?
Try talking now. I think we can hear you, John.
Are you okay now? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, John, please.
Good evening. Thank you.
Detail your request for a continuance.
Yes, hopefully, you got my email. That was just a quick briefing on the issue. Yesterday, John Krompotic representing the applicant, who is also, I believe, on, yes, he's on, I don't see his face. Chris Fawcett is with, he's a principal with Desert Wind Homes, who's the applicant home builder. And in summary fashion here, you guys saw the emails from yesterday. You know, there were four or five of them that I believe I got in the afternoon yesterday. We are very confident that we have access designed per the legal easement that's been recorded against the adjacent property. But if you had the occasion to look at the nature of the comments, they were almost all about the access. They're confused legitimately. So, let's, we suggested a timeout to work with them, work through it, so that they're completely confident, as we are, that the access is per the two easements of which we are using for this project. With that, I think it makes sense to, you know, to, even though it's really a civil matter, as you all would know, it's bound up in the public process now. So, I would request a continuance to the meeting of, you know, there's two weeks down the road, which isn't adequate time. So, the next meeting that I saw was October 7. We would respectfully request that you put us on the agenda time certain, or not time certain, date certain, October 7. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Staff, do you have any presentation on this item?
Staff does not have a presentation. If you choose not to continue it, we can provide a presentation. But if we're going to continue it, we'll just hold off until that continuance date.
Thank you. All right, let's quickly do disclosures. Commissioner Veltro?
Commissioner Veltro reviewed emails. Did not have a chance to speak with the applicant. No, that is on me, not on the applicant.
Commissioner Munoz?
Yeah, I reviewed emails. I visited the site and I did speak with the applicant.
Commissioner Johnson?
I've reviewed, read and received and read several emails and visited the site.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, received, read emails.
And Commissioner Marshall, I did the same. Okay, do we have any additional public comment? Michelle? Oh, I'm sorry. Please believe it.
You always forgive me, John. I visited the site, read emails, and spoke with the applicant's representative.
My fingers are too big. I put it right over your name. My apologies. All right, Michelle, do we have any public comment that we need to relate?
I did not receive additional public comment for this item, other than what you had already received.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Do we want discussion? We can also just move right into a motion?
Mr. Chairman, are you going to make a motion?
Please do so.
All right, I move to continue the item date certain to October 7.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner, I'll second.
Looks like Commissioner Veltro got in first. Any further discussion on the motion to continue to October 7 date certain? Okay, Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. John Marshall?
Yes.
Peter Gower?
Yes.
Mark Johnson?
Yes.
Arthur Munoz?
Yes.
Paulo Levas?
Yes.
Alex Veltto?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion carries, and John, we'll see you back.
Thank you. See you in a few weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so that's 6.2. Item 6.3, case number LDC 210003, Military Road 711. And do we need to wait to get some, the applicants on?
We do. Give us about 30 seconds, and we'll make sure we get the right people in.
Okay. Gotta run a fast meeting. Come on. Who do we have? Stacy, are you the presenter?
Oh, I am. I'm sorry, my computer just reset, so I didn't know if you called on me or not.
I'm sorry. Yes.
It's not a problem. I just didn't know.
Please, take away.
Okay, I need to share my screen.
Stacy, you have 15 minutes, and I'll start the timer when you're ready.
Okay. Can you guys see, are you seeing my screen, the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good evening. Stacy Higgins with Woodruff for the record, representing the applicant on the Military Road 711. We do have several people from our team also on the call, if the commission has questions about anything that I don't cover. Okay, just kind of some background site information. This is a 1.73 acre undeveloped site. You can see it there on the vicinity map, on the southwest corner of the Military and Lemon intersection. You can see in the aerial, there's a mix of developed and undeveloped parcels surrounding the site directly to the west, although this aerial doesn't show it. The North Peak Apartments sit over here. This parcel immediately adjacent to our subject parcel is currently undeveloped, and then across Lemon to the east is an existing LDS church, and that encompasses all three of these parcels. Just very briefly, this parcel is, has a very unique shape, and the reason behind that is that this parcel was created about 10 years ago by RTC as part of a realignment to Military Road as part of the regional plan. At the time that this parcel was established, it was acknowledged that access for this parcel would be from Military and/or Lemon Drive, so it's always been planned, what you see in our, our plan that I will show you in a minute, has always been planned for this piece of property. And if you would like more information about how this parcel came to be 10 years ago, Greg Peake, the property owner, is on the call and can give some additional background on that. So, we are here tonight for a request for a special use permit to address 24-hour use and residential adjacency. The use itself, a convenience store with fuel pumps, isn't allowed use in arterial commercial zoning district. So, this is the zoning map and the master plan map. You can see here, the discussion I just had about Military Road and the realignment, so the city's zoning map layer doesn't quite, it doesn't fill in this area. This is the original alignment of Military Road, and while it looks like it's not zoned AC, I know that it actually is, and it's just a case of a layering issue, not extending fully into this site. The master plan on this property is suburban mixed use, so those are compatible zoning and master plan designations. Looking specifically at the project, so the gas station itself is a 4,200 square foot, single-story building with five fuel islands. The fuel islands sit out here in the middle. It's 19,000 square feet of landscape. As you can see, it's primarily located along the frontage of this property. The traffic and access, the design meets the city of Reno driveway spacing requirements, so again, these access points on Lemon and the access point on Military were discussed when this parcel was initially established. These driveways are both right-in, right-out only, to ensure that there's no left turns across these existing lanes. A traffic study was done for this project, and the traffic study estimated that there would be approximately 1,880 with 148 PM peak trips, based on the fact that Lemon Drive and Military are both existing arterial roads. There was no impact to the current road network as a result of this project. We talked quite a bit with staff early on about how trucks would access this site, given its location and the fact that these access, these driveways are right-in, right-out only. So, we talked to 711, and they were able to confirm with us that trucks would continue using the route they use now. So, there is a 711 about a mile north of this site on Lemon Drive, and so right now, they go up Lemon Drive, and they use, there are several crossovers coming across the drainage that are stop sign controlled on both sides. So, the trucks currently go up Lemon, use a crossover, and then they would be able, in this case, to make the left turn and come back down Lemon Drive, where they would then make the right into the gas station and be able to make the right out of the gas station on Military. Alternatively, and this is not a preferred alternative, but it's a route, trucks could use Military Road if they came on the existing truck route, which would be St. Boulevard to Lear, which connects to Military. So, I just wanted to mention that we talked about that, and the crossovers are something that 711 is currently using. Also, for this site, and because it's in the North Valleys, we looked, and we're sensitive to the drainage issues out there, we have two basins on this site that are designed to hold the 100-year, 24-hour storm, as well as the 10-day storm. And the basin, one of them is located in the northern portion, and the other one is located over here on the eastern portion. Both of those were designed to meet the 1.3 to 1 volume mitigation standard. So, in terms of the residential adjacency, and really the residential adjacency in the 24-hour use kind of tie together in, in the bigger picture of things, the residential adjacency is actually triggered based on zoning, not on the use. The property to the east, where the church is located, is in Washoe County. It's zoned low-density suburban. You can see, I marked on this map, the difference or the distance between the zoning districts is approximately 200 feet, which also happens to be the right-of-way for Lemon Drive. So, this zoning over here in the county is actually what's triggering the residential adjacency, special use permit. We intentionally designed this site with the building oriented the way it was, to limit the impact on that adjacent residential zoning, even though it's built as a house of worship. I also pointed out on this exhibit, and hopefully you can see that, the nearest existing residential use is the North Peak Apartments. Again, that property is zoned AC. It's separated by that undeveloped parcel I mentioned earlier in my discussion, and the existing structure on that North Peak Apartment project, the closest structure, is approximately 400 feet from the canopy. So, I just, you know, I think from a residential adjacency perspective and an impact to the use, there's a fair amount of separation between the gas station and the current North Peak Apartment project. Excuse me, as part of the residential adjacency special use permit, we did a noise analysis. The noise study found that this project will have no impact, and that's primarily around the fact that the ambient noise levels that exist there right now, because of Lemon Drive and Military Road, are already exceeding the code noise levels that are allowable. So, adding this gas station to that will create no additional impact, given those existing noises. We also did a lighting, a photometric plan. We looked at lighting. The lighting for this project is planned to be a mix of recessed canopy lighting in the, over the fuel tanks. There will be some parking lot lighting, and then some wall mount lighting on the buildings. The photometric plan did not show any light impacts on those adjacent residentially-zoned properties. I put in these samples of the building elevations, just so you could get a flavor. These are pretty typical building elevations for 711. They build them all over. They kind of all look the same. You can see this is gonna be a mix of earth, earth tone colors with some brick in there, and if you have questions, Commissioner Johnson, architecturally, our architects are on the phone. They would be, I'm sure, more than happy to talk about the details of the building architecture. But I do want to point out that in terms of windows on the building, they're generally on the front or facing west, not towards the residential adjacency parcel. There is the condition in the staff report about the glazing on the windows, and we will definitely be able to meet that condition and address the window treatment. You can see on these side elevations, there are no windows proposed on the side elevations. This is an example of the canopies. Again, it's showing the typical 711 signs. Get a little bit closer up, if you need some detail about it. Excuse me. So, in closing, again, the use is allowed in the AC zoning. The special use permits are specific for 24 hours, and the residential adjacency, again, that's triggered by the property to the east in the county. It really is an appropriate use for this high-traffic intersection at two major arterials. There's no impact to the adjacent residentially-zoned properties in terms of noise or lighting. The services and infrastructure are readily available because of the existing development in the area. We have reviewed all of the conditions that are proposed, and we agree with them as they're written. As I mentioned, our team is available for any questions that you may have, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Can you pull the, stop sharing your screen? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I believe next we have Kyle from staff.
It's actually gonna be me tonight, guys, surprise. Jeff Warcar, planning manager.
Hold the quickie.
Yep, stepping in for Kyle while he's out. I, I do have a presentation, so let me just share my screen here real quick, and see if you guys are able to see the full screen. Are you able to see the full screen?
We are.
Perfect. All right, so as Stacy mentioned, what's actually triggering this is the, is the 24-hour nature of the business and the residential adjacent property located across the street within the county. The actual gas station and convenience store use is actually allowed by right in this zone, so it's just those two things that are triggering it. There are some notable conditions that we placed on there, one of which has to do with the length of time that this project has in order to pull building permits, knowing that they're going through a sewer expansion, the Reno-Stead sewer facility. We have given them 24 months, and that allows them to work through in case there's a, any kind of capacity issue up there. The, the other additional thing was the 25% opaqueness, and that had to do with more of a reminder to meet existing code requirements, and then, as Stacy mentioned, the 1.3 to 1 closed-bation mitigation measure in order to help with resiliency in the North Valleys and flood planning. There is a right-in and right-out condition, condition number eight, to talk about the traffic impact study, and then also there's something with regards to circulation, and then we added a condition, actually, even though it's not residentially-zoned property, to, to add some level of screening along the North Peak Apartments site located to the west, given that's where the pumps are, and there is existing residential there. So, it adds more of a little bit of a buffer, which helps with the 24-hour nature of the business. So, with that, staff does recommend approval with all suggested conditions, and we're available for any questions as well.
Thank you, Kyle. All right. Let's see here. I'm sorry, let's, before we go to public comment, let's go to disclosures. Commissioner Levas? Any disclosures?
Commissioner Levas, I visited the site and read email.
Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, I have previously visited the site, spoke to the applicant's representative, and I think that was it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, I previously visited the site and received a phone call, but was not able to speak with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Munoz?
Yeah, I visited the site and I spoke with the representative for the applicant.
And Commissioner Veltto?
I'm familiar with the site, and I spoke with the representative for the applicant.
Thank you. Commissioner Marshall, I am familiar with the site, and that's it. Okay, questions? Oh, excuse me. Michelle, any additional public comment, or any public comment?
We did not receive any public comment for this item.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, Commissioner Munoz, I have a quick question about the right-in, right-out. There is existing islands on Military and Lemon Drive. Now, will those be extended so that there, you will not be able to turn, or be a left-hand to turn off a Military into the parking lot, or where exactly does that line up on here, because I had a hard time finding it?
Commissioner Munoz, is that directed to the applicant?
Yeah, to the applicant, please, sorry.
I can take a stab at this, that the driveways, I don't believe that the islands will be extended, not as part of our project, but maybe Paul Suleggi, do you have some information to share about how those left-hand turns won't be able to occur on Military? They, they won't be able to occur off of Lemon, for sure.
I understand that the island exists in Military already, and the approach to the intersection, and so that, that, the existing median blocks those movements, and so there's, there's no, no need to construct new or additional median to, to control the driveways to right-in, right-out operation.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes and no. I understand what Paul's saying, but from being at that area, knowing where the median goes, and looking at, it's gonna be page, sheet, that's one of five, the median will be, literally it ends right there with the driveway, and so you'll be able to turn right around that. So, that, that, from, from knowing the area and knowing the median, and seeing the location of the driveway, that will not stop a left-hand turn. So, I believe that's something that's gonna need to be addressed.
Jeff, can you confirm one way or the other on the status of the island?
I'm ending up right now, and I'm pretty sure the islands extend to the property line, at least on Lemon. Are we, are we talking about Military?
Both of them, I think.
Well, I believe there's a median all the way to the end, and Mike Michelle is also on the line as well, and he's, he's available for questions as well. But the, the Lemon, I believe the Lemon Drive side has a median all the way down, the edge of the project site.
That's correct. The Lemon Drive one, you will not be able to make a left-hand turn from there, but the Military one, it goes almost to the edge of the property line, so you'll be able to turn right around it.
Okay.
Well, you jumped up on the very first question.
Well, I think that may be something we want to talk about as a condition, because I know I have that same concern.
If I could add an item, please, this is Paul Suleggi.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's common that, I guess I had understood, as I look at the site plan, that it was around the property line, which, which is some, as I read the site plan, it is some distance past. Usually, you, you attempt to have those block it by at least 50 feet, and I, I guess I thought it, we were in about that, that range. And I guess I thought it, we were in about that range. So Commissioner Munoz, even if it was about a 50-foot dimension, do you feel that that was not enough? Do you feel like you need a longer dimension than that? I guess would be, I'm just trying to, I felt that there was an amount that exceeded where the driveway was located, which then it gets to be a lot more obtrusive movement. So I thought it was addressed. So I guess that would be my response, anyway. I'll stop with that.
Thanks, Paul. Commissioner Munoz, do you have a?
Yeah.
Respond to those questions?
No. So I do have a concern with that, and I don't believe that's going to be adequate. So if you go down Lemon Drive back towards Buck, there's an Autozone right there, there's a Walgreens, and that extension, that 50-feet extension goes from the driveway of Autozone to the east back towards the driveway for, it'd be the east driveway of Walgreens. There's numerous, numerous accidents from people trying to make that turn, or they'll try and cut that corner when they're headed west, shoot into the wrong lane of traffic, and then make a left-hand turn into the Autozone parking lot there. And I've seen, just offhand the last three years, probably five or six head-ons or side-swipes from that exact movement. So my concern is that the exact same movement from someone leaving, it'd be heading northbound and making a left-hand turn onto Military, they'll do that exact same motion that's happening at the intersection of Buck Drive or just east of the intersection of Buck Drive and the Autozone right there. So I think this does need to be a condition where that island's extended all the way to the end of the property line on the north side of that triangle right there. I think that's going to have to be a condition for me to approve this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have any further questions? Okay, any other commissioners have questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a similar question on the traffic. I see what Commissioner Munoz is bringing up, and I'm looking at the aerial and remembering being out there and having the same concern. I guess my question is a follow-up to Stacy, something that we talked about when we spoke yesterday, and I asked a question of what the movement would be for someone coming north on Lemon. And you said they would make that U-turn most likely at Lemon, flip around and make a right in, coming south on Lemon. And I guess, just to confirm, that a U-turn is an allowed movement at that intersection?
Stacy Huggins, for the record, I guess I don't know if it will be an allowed movement at that intersection. And I guess, you know, to clarify that answer, if it's not an allowed movement at that intersection, then that traffic will have to go further up to that first crossover, where they will be able to cross back and come back down Lemon Drive to access that property.
Commissioner Gower, this is Jeff Forkhart. For the record, that is not an allowable turn at that intersection. Heading northwest from Lemon onto Military is a left-turn only. You cannot turn and make a U-turn because of the free right movement that's coming from Military onto Lemon.
Yeah, and I guess that was my concern. After looking at it a little bit closer, I saw the same thing there. And I guess that kind of exacerbates the concern for someone making a left turn onto Military, going north on Lemon, and then making a left turn into the property past where that existing island terminates on Military, going across traffic. So I just want to sort of echo my concern there about the potential for a left-in. Thank you.
So could I just clarify? I guess, Commissioner Gower, your concern is that vehicles will turn left at Military and try to skirt the median. You're not so much concerned with the fact that they may have to go further north on Lemon and use the crossover to make what would be a legal left turn back onto Lemon Drive? Is that fair to say?
Correct, yeah. I think, given the choice, someone would, if the driver sees the 7-Eleven, instead of going through the Military-Lemon intersection, north on Lemon, and making a U-turn and coming back down to make a right in, southbound off of Lemon, they're going to make a left turn onto Military going north and, exactly, make a left turn across what is maybe an eight-foot wide. You know, it's not a, there's no obstruction there in terms of a physical barrier. It's just, yeah.
Yeah, I understand what you guys are saying, and we didn't touch that.
Okay, commissioners, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson?
Hey.
I have a question. I like Stacy's lead-in for me, but I'm not actually asking an architectural question right now. It was brought up by staff about condition number 10, which is talking about some screening of some indeterminate type to prevent the light glare and light spillover. And I guess this is as much a question for you and maybe even for staff in terms of what, as you're agreeing with the conditions, what is anticipated for installation in order to comply with that particular requirement or condition?
Yeah, I think, I can start on this, Jeff, and maybe you can chime in from staff perspective. You know, the reason we didn't show any screening along that shared property line there initially is because it's a little unknown what's going to be built there. And so we didn't want to propose something until we had a defined plan for that undeveloped parcel so that we could be sensitive to the two uses working together. I mentioned earlier, you know, Greg Peake is on the phone. He is the property owner of that adjoining parcel. The applicant is also listening to the call. So they know they have to work this out, and they know that it's a little vague and a little bit flexible. But I think we were trying to be sensitive to the fact that that undeveloped parcel could be, it certainly could be multifamily, consistent with what they have there now. But it could be office, or it could be a restaurant, although likely not feasible, right? But because it's AC, it could be any non-residential use. And the impact of the gas station on the non-residential use is significantly different than the impact of the gas station on a residential project, and we just didn't know. And so we worked with staff to try to give some flexibility as these two projects move forward to provide screening there. I think it's fair to say that, as you saw on the landscape plan or the color site plan I showed earlier, there are a number of trees that are shown along the frontage. And so I think that the applicant has indicated that, you know, we could move some of those trees from the frontage to that shared property line to mitigate that concern initially. But I hesitate to define what that mitigation has to be, again, not knowing what that parcel will be developed as.
Okay, and that's certainly fair from the applicant's standpoint. So maybe now I'll throw it back to staff and just say, Jeff, it seems like we've got a pretty open-ended condition here with respect to what would need to be looked at by staff during the building department review or the permit process. So is there a level of comfort with the response from Stacy? Or is there something different that was being thought from staff's side?
No, I mean, she pretty much hit the nail on the head. I mean, to give some context, this doesn't require any screening based on code. Flat out, you could just have it with a small little landscape strip and call it a day. The reason why this was added was predominantly because of the 24-hour operations. And regardless of the next store use, 24-hour operations will have an impact on whatever that use is. What Stacy said, though, is correct, because what if it becomes an office or a commercial use? Well, they may not be there 24 hours, so, you know, what's happening at midnight may not impact the adjacent commercial use. However, if apartments get built there, then potentially it may have a larger impact. So we wanted to keep it broad to try to figure out, all right, well, what's coming in? Because the adjacent property could be apartments, in which case Mr. Peake and this applicant would work together. It could be anything, Commissioner, from a six-foot wall to a nice wall of trees. But whatever the case may be, it's meant to defer the impacts of that. I mean, that's the side of the property that has the impacts. The residential side has been designed in such a manner where none of the windows face, it can be for the gas stations on the opposite side of the building. So those impacts are already prevented. It's mainly just to defer that 24-hour operation, the light, the potential for noise on that side.
Okay, and again, I can appreciate what you're trying to do and the situation that both of you are in. The concern that I have is really looking ahead in terms of the timing of this and any adjacent project, because that condition not only addresses light glare and light spillover, but also adequate privacy protection. So we're kind of throwing in a whole bunch of different potential requirements there that, you know, seem to be sort of at the discretion at the time of the project. So I appreciate what you're trying to do. I just, I'm not so sure this is an enforceable condition to anything other than whatever the determination is made by community development when this comes through. So I appreciate the answer that both of you have and what you're trying to do. I just think there's maybe some language there that you might want to be thinking about to make it a little clearer in the future. So I think that was the question I had. So I appreciate the answers. Mr. Chair, no further questions from me.
Thank you. Other commissioners, any other questions?
Commissioner Munoz, just real quick on that point, Commissioner Johnson, I actually have the same concerns with the lighting in the residence there. I actually stopped by this afternoon again to take a look at it, and the amount of people that would be impacted. My thought process was headlights or things shining into windows, and the amount of people that were affected by that was actually kind of minimal. And the distance was a lot longer or a lot further than I originally anticipated. So I just want to say, I did have the same concerns. And after visiting the site again and looking at where it would be in the residences, that concern went away from me. So just want to throw that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Velto, Commissioner Levis, any questions?
The only question I have, I guess, for the applicant's representative, is there a solution to the turn in off of Military Road that you'd be able to propose? And I know it's not necessarily something I think you can do, or I want to put you on the spot for, but is there a way to mitigate the concern that you might have left-hand turns into the parking lot?
Stacy Huggins, for the record, I, you know, short of saying that we could extend the median so that you can't make a left turn in there. I guess I might defer to Paul Soleggi. Do you have any suggestions for that? The median does not appear to extend to the driveway when I look at, I just pulled up Google or if while we were talking, it does not extend that far. I think we need to, you know, figure out a way to mitigate the left turns. I don't know another alternative, Commissioner Velto, aside of extending the median. And I don't know how RTC or the City of Reno would feel about that, quite frankly. So I guess, Paul Soleggi, if you have some additional input on this topic, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'm ready to talk. In terms of, in terms of that, to restrict that driveway on Military primarily is the one of concern, because the other is covered quite thoroughly. In my opinion, the median really should extend past the driveway a good distance. And so, and even my traffic study, I've been researching my traffic study since the previous discussions about U-turns there, northbound Lemon to Military, the potential for U-turns. The traffic study, we identified that the signage says left, has the dual left and says left only, but the U-turn is not permitted. And so unless it's specifically prohibited, it is still an allowed move, the U-turn. And in this case, so I'm kind of shifting topics, but I'm going to finish this up if you'll bear with me. So right now, the northbound U-turn, it is an allowed movement in those dual lanes, in my opinion. And so, and then the movement from Military to go southbound on Lemon, that comes into an exclusive lane, and so the vehicles would cross over. So there is time to get those movements separated. And so there wasn't a reason to prohibit the U-turns, northbound Lemon to Military. And so the traffic study contemplated that and quantified a number for that U-turn movement. Now, on Military, we felt that there would be effective controls that would eliminate the left turn out or the left turn in. And so we also assigned a U-turn from Military to go, so if you're going south on Military, you could U-turn there at Lemon and go back to the north. If you came out of a Military driveway in a right-turn movement, you could U-turn at the signal and go back to the north at Military. So in my opinion, these U-turns are how the store will function. This is a convenience store. People typically, you know, you buy gas at a gas station that's on the side of the road you're at. So this is a smaller move in the peak hour, but we still thought some would come. So in my opinion, the U-turns function properly, but I think it is wise to secure that lengthened median so that the driveway is restricted to right-in, right-out on Military with an extended median.
Thank you, Paul. Yikes. Let's see here. Jeff, any issue with the condition that extends the median to the property line? That's a triangle piece, so it'd be the northern extent of the property line? Or should we make it functional? Or Commissioner Munoz, did you have a, to the property line adequate?
Commissioner Munoz, you know, as far as people that really want to get out and get on the wrong way of the road, because it's a quick movement, it's going to happen. But I think, for me, extending that to the property line is going to be enough deterrent for most people to stop enough of those problems to minimize some of the accidents that are in the potential there. So for me, if that's extended to the property line, I'm more than happy with that. That satisfies me.
Okay, Jeff, any issue with that condition?
I'll defer to our engineering manager, Mike Michelle, to see if he's okay. And then if he's okay, then I have suggested language as well.
Good evening, this is Mike Michelle, engineering manager. I don't have an issue with that condition, extending the raised median to the property line.
Stacy, are you, is that an acceptable condition for you guys?
It is acceptable. This is Mike Michelle.
I'm sorry, Mike, I was, thank you very much. Stacy, what do you think?
Yes, I mean, I think, I would love to hear Jeff propose language, but generally speaking, I think we agree that the median should be extended to make sure that those left turns do not occur.
What do you got, Jeff?
So Jeff Forkhart, so I would propose to amend condition number eight and include a provision at the end. So basically, it would read, prior to the approval of a building permit for site improvements, the applicant shall have plans approved demonstrating improvements recommended in the traffic impact analysis included with the special use permit application have been incorporated into the project. And the existing center median on Military Road shall be extended to align with the west property line of the site.
Commissioner Munoz, is that acceptable?
Commissioner Munoz, yes, that is acceptable.
Okay. West, is it, would it be better to say the northwest corner?
I'm perfectly fine with that as well.
Okay. Why don't we amend to say that, just to clarify the exact point? Okay, where are we? I think we're, oh. Commissioner Johnson, are you comfortable? You have any further questions or discussion on condition 10? I agree with you that adequate protections is a little loosey-goosey, but given the uncertainty of the youth next door and Commissioner Munoz's testimony, wondering what you think about where you are on 10?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate, again, I appreciate the discussion and it seems to be pretty clear for both the applicant and staff in terms of the intent of the condition. So, and it doesn't impact or have an influence on any of the findings that I'm looking to make because as was pointed out, it's not a requirement to screen in that direction. So I think obviously, you know, moving forward with that condition, you know, as noted in sort of our discussion, that I want to make sure that it's looked at, but I don't see anything there that really can be changed or modified based on the unknown situation adjacent. So, and I was just going to bring that up in discussion as a response to Commissioner Munoz, and I appreciate the comment on that. I think the light spillover is definitely something to take into account. But as you say, there's a pretty big separation there with the existing. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have, I think we're ready for a motion. Don't make me call on you.
Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
In case of LDC 21-00003, Military Road, 7-Eleven, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to the conditions, particularly with the modification of condition number eight, to include the language that was provided by staff and the other conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
Commissioner Gower, will you include the reference to the northwest corner in that motion?
I would, yeah, I assume that was in staff's proposed language.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Commissioner Munoz.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
John Marshall.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Paulo Levis.
Yes.
Alex Veltow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion's passed, so good luck with your project. And staff, I really hope this is the last leftover triangle piece of development that we've seen, that we'll see. Why is it like three in a row? All right, let's move on to, are we been going a couple hours? We have two items left. Commissioners, do you want a short break? Or should we keep moving on? Keep moving, okay. We are up to item 6.5. The, excuse me, the item 6.4 was told. We're on to 6.5, the Pioneer Theater Auditorium Zone Change. And Jeff, we'll read back to you.
Thank you very much, Jeff Borcart, planning manager. For the record, let's get this started. I'm going to make both of these extremely quick, both this item and the next item. So essentially, though, some of you may be familiar with how the historic preservation process works. To get listed on the local register of historic places, you have to make an application. It goes to the Historical Resources Commission, it goes to the city council, then it comes back for a zoning map amendment to add the historic overlay. So this is the second half of that process. They've already been added to the local register. This is for the Pioneer Theater. And that's located on Court in Virginia, right down the street from where I'm sitting right now. And essentially, it's been added to the register, and now they're going to add the historic landmark overlay. And essentially, that is the enabling zoning designation that allows for the small set of incentives that you get when you're located on a historic register. Just to give some more context on this, this arose out of the Reno Modern Movement or Reno Momo. And so there are a suite of modern, mid-century modern buildings that were highlighted, and this is one of the most prominent geodesic dome structures. And as far as I know, it's the only geodesic dome structure in our urban core. And so with that, that's pretty much what the proposal is, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Jeff. Did I skip over an applicant presentation, or is the city applicant here?
The city, yeah, the city council initiated this as part of the two-step historic preservation process.
Okay. Let's just quickly go to disclosures. Commissioner Gower?
Commissioner Gower, I have none.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, I am familiar with the property and will disclose that my wife was the one who put together the application to the city for this nomination. So I don't know if there's any issue from a legal standpoint on that, but I want to get that disclosure out there.
Carl, any issues?
No issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Levis?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Veltow?
I did not know what a geodesic dome was before this presentation. Other than that, no disclosures.
God, you are young. All right. Now, let's, where are we? We are on questions. Jeff, can you pull your presentation just so I can see people? Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the commission? Does not look like it. I'm sorry, I skipped over an additional public comment. Michelle?
I did not receive additional public comment for this item.
Thank you. So we don't have any questions, it doesn't look like, any discussion? Somebody want to make a motion? Commissioner Johnson?
I was trying to avoid any sense of impropriety on that, but I'm certainly willing to make the motion on this. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings in the case of LDC 21-00013, Pioneer Theater Auditorium, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
You have a second?
Gower, second.
Commissioner Gower, second. Any further discussion, commissioners? Doesn't look like it. Michelle, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, John Marshall.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Paulo Levis.
Yes.
Alex Veltow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Jeff, are ready for 6.6?
Thank you, commissioners. Jeff Borcart, planning manager, let me get this up to the end. So in keeping with the mid-century modern movement, this one is also a city-initiated zone change for the Washoe County Library in downtown Reno, located on Center and Liberty, and also adding the historic landmark overlay. And here is the 1966 newly opened building right alongside our building today. As you can see, those trees grow in quite nicely, and so do those high-rise buildings. So that's pretty much it on this presentation, also city-initiated, as mentioned.
Thank you, Jeff. Go quickly to disclosures. Commissioner Veltow?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Levis?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Munoz?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Gower?
No disclosures.
And Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures. All right, do we have any additional public comment? Michelle?
We did not receive public comment for this item.
Okay, commissioners, do we have any discussion? Casting a ballot, seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, please do.
Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, again, in case of LDC 21-00012, the Washoe County Library Zone Change, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Commissioner Gower, second.
Commissioner Levis, I'll second.
Brad DeWolfe, let's go to Commissioner Levis. Thank you very much for the second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Michelle, can we have a roll call?
John Marshall.
Yes.
Peter Gower.
Yes.
Mark Johnson.
Yes.
Arthur Munoz.
Yes.
Paulo Levis.
Yes.
Alex Veltow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, another unanimous vote. All right, that brings us to item seven on the agenda, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Gower, is that you?
It is, I do not have an update. We have not had a meeting in about a month, and I do not believe we have another one scheduled for a few weeks.
Okay. A summer break. Now we have a very strange item, additional discussion items. There's nothing listed under it for item eight.
No, we don't have anything for that item.
Angela, is there anything specific that you wanted to discuss there?
Is there anything I want to tell you? No, no, we have nothing under Agenda Item Eight.
Okay, is that a standard item?
No.
I can't see it.
No, that is not our typical, I don't think that's on our typical agenda.
Okay. Just to throw me off balance, I get it. All right, let's go to item nine, staff announcement.
Okay, so a couple of things. At our last city council meeting, which was last week, city council did approve the two zone changes that had been before you previously. One was for the Silver Dollar Zone Change out in North Valleys, and the other one was the Aspire Zone Change located on Clear Acres. So both of those have been approved for a first reading. We will be reaching out to you to find a date that works for the zoning code update. We'll do a separate meeting. Michelle and I were just looking at some meetings. Potentially, we're looking at Tuesday, September 22nd, as a possible date. I know that week you also have Regional Planning Commission, so that Thursday is out. And we also have a city council meeting on that date, so that Wednesday would be out. So we will reach out to you and find a date that works for the broader group on that. And then just an update to keep you up to speed on what's going on with the city during COVID. We had talked about CARES funding at one of our previous meetings, and I wanted to share with the group that we have now released applications for anyone that needs rental assistance or business assistance. So we do have a large sum of money. The City of Reno was given $46 million to use towards COVID projects. Out of that $46 million, we have set aside a large chunk, several million dollars, that will help with rental assistance and another large chunk of money that will help with businesses. So if you are aware of anyone that needs help, feel free to reach out to me. We can send them the information, whether it's somebody that's worried about paying their rent or their mortgage, or if it's a business that has been impacted by COVID, definitely have them reach out, and we can give them kind of the application and fill them in on what the details are of who's applicable to apply and who is not. So we're trying to share that information, get that out as much as possible. There is a very short window of time that they have to apply for this funding, so we need this to happen fairly quickly. If you know someone, again, send them my way, and I will share that information with them. And that is it.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions for Angela? All right, seeing none, we are on to commissioners' suggestions for future agenda items. Anybody, Commissioner Munoz?
Yeah, I don't know if this would be an agenda item or, I believe further discussion needs to happen about public comment and people's inability to do that. I know we discussed it two meetings ago about finding a solution or something so people can actually make public comment. I haven't heard any updates. I don't know if anything's going on in the background or not, if that's happening. But I think that's something that in every email, or I would say the majority of emails we're getting, or at least that I'm getting right now from people is that they're not able to make comment after they see a presentation online, or at least not comment, that may affect our decisions or may have some impact on how we vote. So I think, I stressed last time or the last time we discussed this that I felt something needs to be done. I just want to stress that again. I feel like public comment is something that needs to happen. I mean, I don't know what is in the works, or I know Angela, we did discuss that before about the city trying to do something. Maybe if we could just discuss that further and see where that's going. I think that's important.
Thank you, commissioner. We must be on a mine mill, but I was going to bring that up for an agenda item as well. Angela, I really think it's, and Carl, I think we need to come up with a solution to this particular, you know, being able to provide some sort of comment period at the time. I realize that that privilege is being abused, or I'm not sure if it's actually a privilege, but there's significant abuse at the city council level. But I know we can't really get into a discussion about it now because we're not agenda for it. But I really think it's something we need to discuss as a commission. It's one of those things where maybe the commission can be, you know, we have a different process than the city council if, because historically, we just haven't gotten those same kind of comments. So I think it really needs to be put on our agenda for discussion.
Okay, we can add that to our next agenda. I'll provide an update for the group on any changes we've made since our last discussion.
Could you include that also to options that are out there? You know, delays or other things we can use to address the issues? Not just what the city is intending to do, but what are possible ways that we can address this situation?
Sure, we can do that, too.
Thank you. Carl, do you want to, do you want to say anything or anything?
No, I think we can work with staff and see what options are available and present you with some options. You know, I know that we tried to provide public comment in allowing people to zoom in and then put them in a separate room and then bring them in for public comment. So as you mentioned, you know, we tried that at council, but this is a different process and different issues. So, you know, hopefully we can see if we can implement that process and hopefully we'll have success and avoid people calling in and being obstructive. So see if we can give that a shot.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, other suggestions for future agenda items?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I'm not sure if this is an agenda item as much as a request of staff. For the second or third meeting in a row, we've received a staff report with a, you know, a large number, we didn't hear it tonight, we continued, a large number of housing units. There was accompanied by a report from the school district that indicated three new students associated with 60-plus dwelling units. I know that's not our staff's responsibility, but that's a pretty substantive change to what we were seeing, you know, six months ago with things coming in. So maybe just reaching out to the school district to understand why that those numbers are coming in the way that they are because it just seems a little confusing in terms of one of the findings that we have to make and look at to be seeing, you know, such a disparity between number of units and number of students.
Okay, we can follow up with that as well.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a second?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Night, everyone.